Price of money in our view, but I would just talk through the five game changing interventions. First is Riverside regeneration. This is a series of complementary investments to deliver change along the river. And this is anything from improved cycle congestion links along the river to improved recreation and leisure. And also looking at some mixed use developments alongside the river at places like Riversdale and Minster Gate. The second is Gateway Thetford, and that is looking predominantly around the station. That is looking at how we can work with the land surrounding stations, bring forward new commercial space and additional parking. We had a lot about the congestion on the road up to the station. Improve accessibility to women across the railway station. I'm a resident myself and it's you just have to walk on the platform and that bridge is a problem. We purpose existing buildings to support business startups and business activities. It's that's making use of the buildings that aren't being used around the station to support business. Improving existing links between the station and the existing business parks. We heard from a lot of the businesses around there that they're having, you know, clients come in and it's not the nicest walk or dress impression to get across to those businesses. And then lastly, really just improving the visual appearance of that station as your first impression of the town that that could be improved. Third one is connecting Thetford, and that is quite simply delivering a series of active travel interventions. And that's looking at collecting the town as a whole from up where your chest goes is all the way through to the north, south, west and east. But also improving that active travel connection to that forest as well. So there's been a disconnect there. The fourth one is Innovative Thetford. And that's looking at a new learning hub for looking at units like Breckland House and the former Cozy Carpits site as a potential opportunity there. And looking to support further the brilliant work that Charles Barrow Centre does there. And then last but not least, this brand Thetford. We worked quite closely with the Hemingway and Place branding work as part of this to make sure that it was cohesive. It would not have made any sense if Place Barren wasn't a part of this to kind of continue pushing that work forward. As I say, that is complemented by a number of quick shorter term wins, things like events in the town centre, improvements to public realm, looking at the heritage conservation development area. It's something that we can do now instead of waiting for big pots of money to come through. The one thing that I would stress is that this is a, for want of a better phrase, this is a blueprint. So everything that is in here, we're not asking you to adopt to make sure that these things absolutely happen as they're written. They are concepts. So if you take Innovative Thetford as an example, the new learning hub, we don't know what the skills gap is yet. If we're going to do something, we need to understand what that something is first. So none of these will describe exactly what they are supposed to be. So I'll hand over to Carol O'Leary, because that can move on to how we would manage those to make sure that we are working in partnership with yourselves.
Yeah. So outlined in your papers, there's a little org chart which shows the shared delivery programme that we're kind of putting together at this moment. And this includes at the top, the Future Breckland Board. And their role is to oversee overarching vision of Breckland. There's the Breckland Prospector, which gives those key sort of visionary document of things which are kind of needs across the district. The board is made up of county representation, district, as well as the LET, private sector representation and voluntary sector and skills and training sectors. And it hope, we hope that with that group of people, we can lock kind of different funding, which we haven't done in this way before. Alongside that, that board will be annual town forums. So once a year in every town, we're going to look at each of those plans, look at each intervention and ensure that they're still relevant and look to see if we need to make any changes. And making sure that the plans still authentically meet to the needs of the residents and all stakeholders involved. In each town, as needed, we're putting together town specific steering groups. Thetford is fortunate that there already is the Greater Thetford Partnership, so there is that resource already there. And a group of people from different areas to push forward change and improvement. I think that, just for the record, Jack, who's the manager there, is unfortunately leaving us. However, this is probably an opportunity for us to get someone in that position who can, has specific skills in some of these initiatives in order to lock some funding. We will really, these interventions are going to be led by project teams. And we want to ensure we get the right people on the right projects in order to take them forward. And some, as I say, some of these will be across the district. So for example, kind of active travel and bicycle, like cycle infrastructure will probably be looking at districts the whole, while other ones will be looking at town specific project groups. So I think we've explained the benefits, benefits here really, it's about sharing a vision, sharing this blueprint. And when those funds, that funding becomes available, that we're able to hit the ground running and have the evidence in place that these are the kinds of projects which meet the needs of our residents. So happy to take any questions from you.
Councillor Hollis, please.
You were saying about the around station area, making it look better and like putting other things on. You're obviously including month road allotments on that one allotment land. Generation I car parks building.
I said it's land around the station. Yeah, feasibility is there. The main aim is to look at new commercial space and additional car parking. There's no decisions yet on what land that is essentially, but.
But you've just sit round, round the station.
So it will be looked at, but there's been no firm concrete decision yet on whether it would be the allotments. That will be a question put to the local area. It's actually, it's not Breckland's land. Exactly. So the decision doesn't lie with us. So if that was to come up, funding, et cetera, then that discussion would, would open.
And as I understand it, it's part of this feasibility work being carried out by Greater Anglia. So, and yeah, and it will come back to this group, the discussion.
Somebody else, please.
Just a quick, it does say in the plan, you're going to look to prove to your lot. There it's written, I've just read it. Do we do read it out?
I mean, no, I am aware, I think, I mean, I think the thing is, is that that is an option which is being looked at. It is certainly not saying that you're agreeing to that, to us using that allotment space. If there is any wording which we can change, which we're better aligned to. It being a little bit more neutral, we could look at that.
And I mean, this, this document did come out to consultation to yourselves, to us as town councillors, and there were opportunities to feedback. Now, this council resolved to, to support the feasibility study to understand the what if. The decision, as rightly said, does sit with the town council, should it decide to. But there is a requirement, should it, if, and it's very much if, then appropriate alternative sites would need to be sought because, you know, as we heard from allotment holders in the public forum, there is concern about that and how that's going to impact them. So those, all of those things would have to be taken into consideration before a decision could be made. So it's, it is really the early doors conversations that we're talking about at this stage. Is there an opportunity? Yes or no? And it's about the benefit to Thetford as a whole and see where it takes us. We haven't said yes, we haven't said no to it happening. We've just said, we want to explore it and understand it better. Councillor Cannon, please.
I've got, I'm going to meet up there whilst it disappears.
Oh, no.
Yes, one of them. I think my question is around, after what's happened tonight, is at each stage, we have to let the public know. I mean, yeah, we've had the documents, but we haven't publicised them documents. And I think it's very important, you know, after this uproar tonight, it shows you that people are interested in what's going on. And things about the Great Effect of Development Partnership, we get accused and we don't know nothing about them. You know, as councillors, we're at the bottom of the line, but get all the rough. Do you see what I mean? And then they're in the distance, Breckland and Norfolk, but we get it. And they say, but you must know, because they were sharing at Tina tonight, you know, but she don't know because we don't know. So, you know, and I think that's important on every stage when you're, when they're working on something is, what is it that the people think, you know?
And to pick up on that, this council has two representatives on the Greater Partnership. Challenge them and hold them to account under the agenda item that comes up of councillors on outside bodies. That's your scrutiny opportunity to question them. And then the other side of things is this, again, as I said previously, this document came out to all town councillors. We have a responsibility as representatives, as we were keenly reminded of today, to engage with our communities and to represent all voices within our communities. So it is about communicating with all. So I think we all need to be very mindful of that. Any further questions, please? Councillor Dowling.
Thank you. Just following up on Councillor Cannon's remarks. I think all of these issues that the interventions that are mentioned, they all seem a good idea in principle. But I would like to reiterate that I think that they do need to come back at stages when there's more information. So that's, you know, it's just because we would agree with carrying this forward now, doesn't mean we agree with everything that might come up in the future. Because things change, don't they?
I think that's right. And as I say, they'll be dealt with on a project by project basis. Let us be honest, when you start with a blank piece of paper, it's very hard to get people around the table and enthusiastic. If you come to somebody, the town with, we want to look at the allotment land, you're going to get people coming along and we'll get the answers. We can start that discussion, but as you say, that's what the project teams are for in those annual forums is to get those, those views. So take on point, on board the point and run better communication. We're not tackling the challenge of best partnership work yet if we're still not talking to each other.
I'd also reinforce that much of this did not come from councillors. It came with consultation with the communities and across the whole Breckland place, over 20,000 people engaged with questionnaires and workshops and so on. So, you know, it is that voice and we need to continue that communication line as was reiterated. Councillor Baretto, please.
Very quickly, can we just clarify, what's the timeline? So at the moment, there's a possibility study and there's this option on tape that you mentioned. But what's the next step and what's the time frame until there's some sort of conclusion or until there's some final decision on what projects are priority? You can just give us an idea of what's your timeline, please.
Well, some of these projects, as we know, are starting to be investigated now. And that is all unfortunately pending on what funds we can secure. So with that one, that's obviously partnership working with Greater Anglia, which has unlocked some funding for us. And with, really, it's going to be a case of us going to the drawing board. Obviously, it was disappointing we didn't get the levelling up funds, but we know there will be more pots of money becoming available. And we'll have to prioritise around what we can manage to leverage really.
As I say, best case scenario, what you're talking about the time frame of months, a year?
A whole plan, it's up to 10 years plus the whole.
Which is always thinking about, you know, prioritising a few projects until we get to that, or that initial point.
And that's worth noting, some of the game changing, the quick, quick win interventions, actually, we've already unlocked money and able to deliver. Like we're working with yourselves on the marketplace, events in the town, we hope it's all more, more together. Yeah. And meanwhile, use as well. So we are picking off the smaller ones because we have got funds that.
People ask when is this going to happen, is the question.
And I think it's communication again when we're taking these off, make sure we talk about something.
Can I just say that when, when we were, the officers were working together, we were looking at also our heritage master plan that we're currently working on at the moment. And we made sure that absolutely what was in our heritage master plan was aligned with Breckland. So that everybody's, you know, heading along the same direction, looking after our heritage. And that there was stuff that both Breckland and Thetford could support each other in, particularly things like the Charles Barren Museum at St Peter's. So, you know, there'd be projects for the town that if we have them oven ready for when funding comes along, then he starts with this. I'm sorry, I need tea.
So are there any other questions, please, team? Okay. In that case, I would like to make the recommendation that Thetford Town Council adopts the town delivery plan. Do I have a second or at all, please? Thank you, Councillor Brindle. All those in favour? Against? And no abstentions because I think everybody's voted there. So that motion is carried. We had majority, yeah, say yes and two against. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it's been slightly longer and more interesting than you expected it to be. But thank you for persevering with us. We do appreciate it. Thank you for your time. So, normal service is resumed and we go back to our standard agenda run. I'll just let the team escape rather than.
So we would pick you later than expected.
No, as a resident, that was.
Thanks ever so much. So we go to agenda item 693, which is the minutes of the last meeting to confirm the minutes of the full council meeting held on the 25th of January, accepting those items that were deal with, under the exclusion of press and public, which is those, what we call below the line. Is everybody in agreement? They're a true and fair reflection of the meeting, please.
Abstained, I wasn't at that meeting.
Duly noted. Thank you. Have you got that, Karen? Councillor Dowling abstained on that vote because she wasn't in attendance and thank you. So we then move on to, I lied, it's not normal service at all because we go on to 694, which is nominations for mayor all year 2023-24. Sorry, for those who are normally here, we normally go straight on to the committee minutes, but we're not. So it's to receive nominations to appoint a deputy mayor elect. I'll open the floor and ask for any nominations, please. Councillor Brindle, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to propose Councillor Chris Harvey.
So you're about to keel over? Do you accept that nomination? It's the startled rabbit look that I'm concerned about. I have a second in the shape of Councillor Hollis. Are there any other nominations, please? For the sake of clarity, all those in favour? I thoroughly recommend multivitamins, Justin. Councillor Harvey, congratulations. You are deputy mayor-elect for the 2023-24 Mayor All Year.
I look forward to booking all those events for you.
We now need to move on to the committee minutes to receive firstly, the personnel committee. And that is Councillor Cannon, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to, I'm pleased to. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of the 2nd, 2023. I have two recommendations and one is under 630 stroke 22, policy review. And it's recommended that full council adopts a safeguarding policy and safeguarding policy and model publication scheme. We'll take them both together, one at a time.
I think we'll do them individually, if that's okay, please.
These were received at full council on the 31st of January.
So, so why is that on the 7th of February?
And it's the previous meeting.
Policy in review.
I know it's exciting when we go on field trips, but. So yes, so that recommendation that full council adopts safeguarding policy and model publication scheme. Councillor Hollis, are you still happy to propose that? And Councillor Brindle, still happy to second that as per the committee? Yep. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Councillor Cannon.
Thank you. And the second one is 631 stroke 22. And it's that recommendation that live streaming for council meetings be disconnected, discontinued and replaced by a Microsoft Teams format as it provides better audio and visual information. I don't know if anybody's ever sat at home and tried to listen to a town council meetings. You, you might just about hear the mayor, if you're lucky, or whoever's in the chair at the time. It's very hard. And we have been, this has been said, that this is a better way to do it because we'd be able to hear properly.
So we reverse the line up on that one. Councillor Brindle proposed that and Councillor Hollis seconded that. Are you happy to stand by those proposals and seconds? You can say no if you so desire. I don't mind. Okay, so all those in favour? And one abstention. Thank you. That's carried. Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you'd like to pass the minutes, please.
Move minutes? So we then move on to the planning committee on the 7th of February. The Chairperson, Councillor Wright, isn't here. I wasn't there, but I'll take you through the minutes. We've got page one, page two, page three. There are no recommendations. Move the minutes? Thank you. We then move on to venues and communications committee and guess what? The Chairperson isn't here. So let's have a look. Do we have the Vice Chair here? Who's the Vice Chair on that one? Councillor Baretto, over to you. You don't need to hear. There's no recommendations. Yeah, so move. Thank you. There's a theme occurring, team. Move on to the amenities committee. And again, Councillor Jeremy is not available and our thoughts are with him on this difficult day. Do we have the Deputy Chairperson here? Councillor Hodgson?
I wasn't at the meeting. I'm happy to, I don't look up there. It looks as though they're always old matters. But I'm happy to move minutes.
Okay, so move minutes. Thank you. We then move on to the Heritage and Town Events Committee Minute Meetings, and that was actually me. So that's okay. So we do have a couple of recommendations for you, please, team. So under agenda item 67022, the purchase of an extra relief chairs for the council chamber. So the reason for this is coming because the boundaries are changing in terms of town council and part of the King's Fleet area and Hill House Lane ultimately, that previously fell into the parish of Proxton, will become part of the parish of Thetford and under ourselves. So we will have two extra councillors and yeah, we need more seats for them because it's unfair to ask them to sit on the stairs really, isn't it? And do a Christopher Robin. So the, it was resolved and the recommendation is that full council approves the use of the civic reserve, which is nominal code 3605, to fund any related expenditure that cannot be funded from any budget underspend in this financial year. So we only dip into the reserves should we need to. I'm happy to propose that. Councillor Hollis, are you still happy to second that? All those in favour, please? Thank you. That's unanimous. And then obviously there's the town events. Please do make sure you have some of those dates in your diary because there are going to be some amazing events coming up. We have the King Charles III coronation event. Crikey, we covered a lot in that meeting, didn't we? And that's all recommendations dealt with. So beg leave to move the minutes?
Move the minutes.
Thank you. And then we finish off with the finance committee meeting on the 21st of this month. And if I remember rightly, it's, no, there's one. So there is one recommendation under 68522, which is the financial risk assessment. And the committee recommends that the amended financial risk assessment to full council. I'm happy to propose that. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Councillor Cannon. All those in favour? Thank you all. Move the minutes?
Move the minute.
Thank you all very, very much. So we move on to the Mayor's remarks and report. It's been a little bit quieter than normal and sadly I was poorly at one point, so I couldn't attend the King's Limmat. I missed dodging cars and trying to attack other civic heads across Norfolk in that way. But have, have attended others and I would like to say thank you again very much for the support that was provided to me in terms of both attendance and raffle prizes for the charity quiz that we undertook. Several people have had words with me about being a bit mean on some things and then not being mean enough on others. So there we go. You can't please all of the people all of the time when you are quiz master. But I'm delighted to say that we did raise almost £400 for the Mayor's charity, which is the Norfolk Reading Project. And look forward to you all hopefully being able to support in one way or another the upcoming Mayor's Ball. And obviously, if you do know any volunteers that would like to go into schools to support the volunteer aspect of that project, please do get in touch. Are there any questions on that listing, please? In that case, duly noted, and we move on to the agenda item that we mentioned previously, which is town council representatives on other bodies to receive and note any reports. Anybody got anything, please, and thank you. In that case, we will move on to reports from county and district councillors. Team, anything, please? Councillor Brindle?
I wasn't going to report actually, thank you.
Councillor Harvey?
I wasn't at the press meeting, so I'm sorry, I'm holding, sorry.
Councillor Dowling?
I mean, it was, just to say, it was quite an interesting and comfortable council meeting, the last one. I know you've all had coffee, so what was discussed and so on. I think it was, yes, it was good.
Councillor Land, please.
I'm very mindful about the Breckland meeting last week. My dad was very sore. So no, I'm not going to.
Okay, so as both a Breckland and a county councillor, I would like to share some information with you, if I may. So Breckland has recently received over 1.6 million investment for local priorities, which is part of the UK Shared Prosperity Funding. And that's come from the awfully named Duluck, which makes me think of a paint company. And that's predominantly to be spent between 2023 and 25 and to direct resources into funding key local priorities, particularly those that help vulnerable residents and our businesses. Thetford has become Norfolk's first mindful town. I'm sure you all saw that on social media and press releases. And that's in recognition of the mental health support here. More than 50 people from 23 different Thetford based organisations have received a wide variety of mental health training funded by the Breckland Council Mindful Towns Programme, which has been delivered by Norfolk and Wavely Mind and Wellbeing Norfolk and Wavely. And that's a community based approach to mental health. And then none of us can, are always mindful of that there is a complementary element. And obviously, Pudding has been a fantastic success. If me going there three times and on the fourth time managing to get there before she's sold out, which is, you know, fantastic. And it's, it's challenging times for our local businesses and we should welcome and respect those people that do actually, you know, care for their town and invest in their town. And I wish Pudding every success because, yeah, I'm glad it's a really long walk up to her town because it builds up my appetite and then works it off afterwards. In terms of Norfolk County Council, obviously, the budget was approved back on the 21st of February. There is a net spending increase of 29.6 million to meet those rising costs. A council tax increase has been. A council tax increase has been put in place sadly, but that is the nature of the beast unfortunately. And a significant proportion of the fifty nine point seven million pound savings coming from doing things better or less, including seventeen million from the first phase of a strategic review to the council. In nice news, I was really privileged to be able to attend the launch event for the Last Voyage, which if some of you remember the uproar over a shipwreck that was found off the Norfolk coast. And I would urge you all to attend the incredibly interesting exhibition that's taking place in Norwich Castle Museum. And it's fascinating because there's more of her out there, they only were given permission to take what was on the surface. There's a lot more underneath and yeah, she's been dubbed Norfolk's very own Tudor Mary Rose. So yeah, it's a significant wreck and a significant working together item between Norfolk museums, the team that actually found her and also the U E A. So bringing all those elements together in the educational piece, I thoroughly recommend popping along. That's it for me. Any questions? In a question answering mood today? No, in that case we will move on to six nine nine, which is community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Team? We're going to say in light of, I think, yes, we get a date in the diary and we put it out there and we utilise what is clearly a fantastic network to enable people to engage with councillor Cannon.
No, that's what I was gonna say, just make sure that we advertise them dates so people can't say they didn't know about it.
Noted. Anything else team?
A little bit of a few words about what the master plan. At which stage of the stages of it, ten months, that's an option, so what's intended to do, I mean. Trying to tell people only after their decisions, they say, well, we're in a normal world, but you kind of feed them little nuggets of information along the road about what's being done and what's being prepared for. So I think people would measure food a little bit better.
You mean the Breckland plant? We would have got Breckland to write that, wouldn't we? We can ask Breckland to do a piece for us.
They could either Breckland do it themselves, which they should.
We can, we've found that we have adopted it.
Yeah, must have been thought of the voting and adopted, just put a little bit on our side as council town council as well, let people know what it is. The more people we reach with information, the better.
What's this council wish to do that? You're the decision makers, I'm just here to help you make a decision. Yes?
So you want a media piece about future towns and allow Breckland to contribute to that media piece?
Yeah, there's plenty online that we can utilise from that.
I think they should, I'm just suggesting to say that it should be on their side because that's where people have to know about.
Councillor Harvey?
I would like to make our disappointment clear, the fact that Mayton Road, thank you, it's been open three days a week, two days per week.
I want to comment, but I feel it would be inappropriate to, my proximity to them as a business. Anything else that you want to get out there to the community? Okay. We then move on to agenda item seven hundred, which is the use of the town seal. To note the use of town seal on the following legal document, which was the easement at Nuns Bridges. It is to note, are we all clear on what that easement was? So do you recall that this council made a resolution to permit as part of the what's the word I'm looking for? That's the one, thank you.
They're allowing them to fall under the river.
So the mole, we had a presentation on, so yeah. Yeah, that was the legal documentation to permit that easement, okay? And then we then move on to the interim heritage report. This has been circulated previously and then got circulated again once we got roads out and changed words. Yeah, obviously councillor Wright was going to update you. Are there any questions please team? This has been circulated in advance. Are there any bits?
I do have a few salient points to excite you with.
Let's do salient, exciting.
Okay, so I just picked up four very quick ones. Okay, the first one was on the interim visitor numbers. Over the last eight months, our average visitor numbers are between four and six thousand people a month to Guildhall, which is a fifty five percent increase on previous. So this time, so that's an increase from September twenty one to September twenty two, yeah. So there's been a significant increase in that. And we also as part of the bid had to have target audiences that we reached out to. And all those target audiences have increased by a minimum of thirty two percent. So that's good news. So on the education package has been massively successful with us engaging in pilots with all the EMAT schools. And basically what happened was a lesson packs were produced as part of the curriculum about Thetford's famous folk. So in primary schools between years one and six, people are learning about different packages. So we had Homes and Cables, Fireseeing, we had Dr Minns, we had Charles Burrows. So they've all got their own lesson and those lessons are supported with activities and visits and plays and things like that. Been hugely successful. So I think now we're dealing with, we've gone wider than that, we've gone wider than Norfolk. We're now dealing with schools in Suffolk as well. There's been, we've had a local university has come in for one of the Aziz's play as part of their law course, have come in and had a look at that. And I think so far this year it's over two thousand pupils that have been through our doors and have benefited from that. So one of the major legacies going into the heritage master plan is that we will continue to expand these education. And if necessary now, these packages are available to roll out nationwide. So that's very positive, getting the word out about how amazing Thetford is. So also we had our heritage volunteers and we set up volunteers and we've actually trained thirty heritage volunteers so far. They help at events, help with the education, come and do the schools things. And there've also been people who have helped us going through the, when they do the Aziz's events. It's actually the transcripts from the archives, from the actual trial. So there's people involved in, you know, bringing those transcripts to life. So there's been over thirty people now that are heritage volunteers. We will be having heritage heroes, please feel free to apply. Upcoming projects, we are finally, finally getting the water trough done in the marketplace. And the water will be reconnected, so there will be free clean drinking water available at all times as Dr Minns would have wanted us to. There is a mosaic schools project going on, so the children are designing and making a mosaic that's going to go at the top of the stairs in the Guildhall with the crossover bridges. And that's going to be all about the timeline of Thetford. So that's going in there and we will have some of our heritage heroes from the school will be helping with that. The Two Towers, as I like to refer to it because it does feel like a trip to Mordle. The big tower, the scaffold should finally be going up in the next week or two. Hopefully it's quite a complex build because of the nature of the building. And further assessments will be made, but we will have the delight of watching our clock tower be lifted off the roof by a crane. So it's something to look forward to allegedly. So we've got plenty of events going on in the marketplace, particularly World War Two events. And we will be appointing some more heritage ambassadors that will be helping us do tours and heritage based events. The sing room at the moment is still work in progress and we've agreed some displays. So hopefully that will be ready to go in the next few months. And hopefully the whole of the Guild Hall will be ready and sparkly for Heritage Open Days in September.
Councillor Hollis, you indicated to speak earlier.
I was just gonna say, it was good reading, and well done to all. Thank you, now it's bringing the storms in with Amber and that, yeah, it's really good reading, well done everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Cannon please.
Yes, thank you madam mayor. I was just, we was talking earlier about press releases, but I think that when the trough is near enough ready, that would make a nice press release. Because there's not many towns that actually got their troughs working again. So I think that'd be a nice press release.
I completely agree with that. Councillor Hodgkinson please.
I'd say I'm a bit nagging from Tina, I came down to the heritage consultation. It wasn't really nagging, she just reminded me of that. And it was very interesting actually because I spent most of the time there with Amber and Katie. Two people who are most involved in the educational stuff. And they were just so obviously very excited about what they'd done with the children and also conveyed the excitement that the children had and the ripple that then went out to their parents. And so I find that very inspiring actually. And something else that they told me about was that when they deliver some of it in here and they use these pictures, these guess who? We should do that one. Anyway, congratulations to that.
Thank you so much, Councillor. Anybody else please? Councillor Dowling please.
Just ask, what do you think the sort of rise in the people who visit, is it due to any particular thing or combination of factors? I think there's still a theme within the town, particularly when you talk about King's House and King's House Gardens. Every time we do something, people go, are we allowed in there? And you're like, well, yes, you know, the trust opens up the gardens, you know, for people to enjoy. And I think that, you know, we have an expanding population that potentially comes in and isn't aware of our heritage. And so we're gaining new audiences all the time. And I think actually going through the schools, because, you know, the children really enjoy, you know, it's the horrible histories, isn't it? They absolutely love it. And I think it just builds in that passion. And we literally have them coming in going, I've brought my mum in. And because I love the fact that they think that Amber is Susanna Holmes. Bring them in, that I've brought my mum in to tell you about the baby. And Amber's like, oh yes, yes, yes. You know, and it's just, I think there's been more events, there's been more information. I think the education piece has been massive actually, far, far more than we expected it to be. And it is getting them in when history is exciting, you know, they want to know about nests and people's rib cages hanging in gibbets. That is exciting, you know, and I just think that the fact that we changed the way that we looked at the heritage and it's kind of gone in that way and it's all been sort of layered. So that they come in and it's in the tea room and there's events and I think it's kind of, I think we're much more available heritage wise as a council than we have been before. So I think it's, I don't think it's one thing in particular. I just think that, you know, it's been like, what, three years that we've been kind of layering. And as a team and as a council, we've got better at, you know, telling people about our heritage because we've learnt as we've gone along. You know, I don't think there's one particular thing. I noticed that children do tell their parents, I saw a little boy explaining in the Guild Hall the other day about what the pictures were on the table and stuff.
Anybody else please? In that case duly noted and thank you town clerk. So we then move on to next agenda item, which is the committee officers update to receive any update from the committee officer since the issue of the agenda. Do you have any?
No, we haven't.
Then we move to seven oh three, which is to consider resolving that pursuant to the Public Bodies Admissions Meetings Act nineteen sixty, the press and publicly excluded from any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. I propose that, can I have a second please? All those in favour? Thank you very much for attending.